At this time, I would like to ask Robert Keplinger to come forward and lead us in our prayer, please.
Let's pray. O Jesus, we love and bless you, Lord. Thank you for your goodness, for your mercy, for your understanding, Lord. As this year comes to an end, we ask that you remember you, Lord, what you in our hearts. Right now, we ask that you bless this city council meeting, Lord. Bless these members, Lord. Give them wisdom, give them understanding and insight as they try to plan the city of Sherwood. We ask in your great and precious name, Lord Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
My name is Louis, United States of America, and to the Republic for which you stand, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lilly? Hi. Here. Keplinger?
Here.
Brooks? Here. Williams? Here. Sanders?
Here.
Harmon?
Here.
McMahon?
Here.
Uh, proof of minutes of the regular meeting on November 28th, 2016, it's transcribed. Move for adoption. Lilly? Hi. Here. Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMahon?
Aye.
Do you have November 2016 financial senior packets or any questions or comments? Committees and/or commissions?
Yes.
Advertising Promotion Commission? Uh, before you read the ordinance, I just want to go over trail lots. First, we did not meet in December, so there's no minutes. We will meet in January on the first Wednesday of the month at 3:00 p.m. Trail lots, um, had some challenges, to say the least, but it is, it is going very well. We, um, already had $29,000 collected, which is about $5,000 over last year for the same period. And we, we're about 9,700 cars. Uh, we've had a lot of food, I think, delivered to all room at McMahon's Church for the Crisis Corner, so, uh, like, so we've had some challenges, but, um, it's, it's going very well considering everything. And before you read the ordinance also, um, there is an explanation page for the budget. If anyone has any questions, hopefully it's on that explanation page. So if you'll go ahead and read the ordinance.
Uh, do we need to vote on that, uh, brief in one time instead of reading three times?
You just didn't let me get it out fast enough. I would ask for a motion to waive items 6A, to waive three requirements, and item 6A, 9 through 20.
So, second.
Lilly? Aye.
Aye.
Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMahon?
Aye.
And ordinance provided for the adoption of an Advertising and Promotion Commission budget to the city of Sherwood, Arkansas for the 12-month period beginning January 1, 2017, and ending December 31, 2017. Appropriating money for each and every item of expenditure during provided for, declaring emergency.
Do you see any discussion or comments or any questions?
Move for the adoption. Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMahon?
Aye.
There is a mercy clause.
Aye.
Aye.
Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMahon?
Aye.
Civil Service Commission? Parks and Recreation Committee?
We did not meet in the month of December. Our meeting in January would be scheduled for the second Monday in, uh, January at 6:00 p.m. at the Horerick Center.
Personnel Committee?
Uh, we also did not meet, um, and will not meet in January. Our next scheduled meeting will be February the 2nd, at 5:00, at the Horerick Center.
Planning Commission? Senior Citizen Committee? Sewer Committee?
An ordinance fixing rates for services first by the sewer system of the city of Sherwood, Arkansas, and prescribed for other matters thereto, for declaring emergency and for other purposes. That's the second reading of the ordinance.
Now, we had our public hearing at 6:30. Make sure the council is, uh, letting by another month, or?
I think we should drive another month, being that it's, uh, increasing rates, letting. Does it cause a financial issue if we drive one more month?
I'll, I'll, I'll refer to our sewer manager.
It shouldn't be an issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Just, just every two more times.
Okay. Read me. All the members not present.
I can, I can just say we did not have a meeting. We will meet in January at a regular time. And ordinance preserving to the Sherwood City Council, the, the approve, I think I meant the approval, of all new job descriptions declaring emergency for other purposes. The second reading.
I have, uh, a couple of questions. Do you want me to ask them now or wait till we? Okay, we're ready. Um, I know this was the second, this was an amended version, and in talking, I'm, I've read this one a couple of times because I know it's been changed. And if I ask my colleagues to kind of look at it with me. I'll give you a chance. And I, I don't mean to prolong this, I'm just, there's about four things. I think I mentioned last month that, I know the intent, I was told the intent was for new employees, and there's a couple of things I think that need to be tweaked to, to do that. And I'll start, I'm gonna start just with the title of it, I mean, in the, in the beginning part. It said, "An ordinance reserving to the city council." Since all employees, since not employees answer to the city council, I was concerned with the fact that we're reserving this just for the city council when every employee answers to the mayor. So, that was just, if you'll just circle that, I had a question about that word right there, "reserving." Um, then if you go into the whereas', if you will, look at the second and third whereas'. One of the things in the, in the second whereas', it talks about establishing clear lines of responsibility and accountability for city administration. And again, those clear lines, if you look at an organizational chart, the lines are either directly solid lines because they're so direct responsibility, or dashlines because of their, they're correlated with each other. Because no alderman has any responsibility for any employee. This is all administrative. I, I have a que, I have concern with that because I think the whereas', number two, and the whereas', number three, totally contradict each other. They're, they're opposing views. Um, because in this third one, it's talking about the, the oversight of it. We cannot be administrative. We're only legislative. And again, this comes back to the warning. I think our city attorney, Steve Cobb, gave us a bunch of chilcocks. Now, more importantly, are, is section one and section two. Um, if you look at the title, it talks about all new employee job descriptions, and in section one, the word "new" is vacant. I think in section one, if this were to pass, it has to also say "all new employee job descriptions," and the word "new" is missing there.
I agree. As I said, I always want to recommend "new" or initial, the words "new" or "initial" go there.
Okay. Um, the.
Can I, can I, I've got a question I just want to clarify.
Okay.
Charlie? When we talk about "new," we're talking about newly created positions. We're not saying that if a position becomes vacant, it's already created.
Okay.
If this comes into play.
Well, that actually, Mr. Cobb, is my, is the next part of that same sentence, because to me, the next part of that sentence is backdooring into taking over every job description, because read what it says. "All employee job descriptions for any new employee position." Well, if Beverly Williams resigned today and Marina Brooks took my position, then the city council by that would have a new employee coming into a job dis, position, and that would have us approve it. That's what that actually says. So I think that has to be edited, because it, indeed, it's not to backdoor all jobs, but current language makes it backdoor, that it opens to every job.
How about newly created employee positions?
That could help, but under the current language, that, that doesn't say that.
What if you have a job position that comes vacant and it needs to be tweaked?
Well, then, then that's not our responsibility.
I'm just saying, is that considered to be?
Well, then in section two, you need to also say.
That's where I'm, I'm still in section one. Let's, okay. You're fine. And, and I did want to know that I, before I, I was addressing the city council tonight, I did call our city attorney to sit to say, "Am I in left field on this? Am I reading this, things into this that are not true?" But my experience is that I don't think I did, and he confirmed I was not. So, thank you. But the very question you asked, Mary Tyler, is the question that bothered me about it, because it implied that if a position becomes vacant, then we have the autonomy to rewrite that job description under the current language of section one. Okay. Section two, I have, I have a concern about that as well. It says, "The city council will hereby retain authority." To me, we're not retaining it. We've never had that authority. We're assuming that authority. And again, I think that's a munis, that's a problematic piece for me, because that takes away any of our, um, protection under litigation of municipal. Again, it also says, it says, "Over all employee job descriptions." Again, the word "new" is vacant. So, it, sections one and two, both are problematic. Section three, it's not an emergency. We only have one new job in the entire city. We don't have to do this today, and I think that, well, you know, in my heart of hearts, I believe this total ordinance should not be passed at all, and I probably won't win. But if I do, I mean, if I don't win, I'd at least want it written right. So, those are my suggestions.
I, I don't think it, or like, kind of pushed forward in terms of emergency, um, then that needs to be redacted. Right, and, and that certainly could be, but I mean, it's, it's.
Well, I've been a slow process. It's not like it's trying to be done all in one, yeah, all in one month. Well, I've been one of the slowest, which brings to my point, if we're on our third month for writing an ordinance to create a job description, how many months will it take us to create that job description? So, to the two authors, the two aldermen, your authors of this, I would ask that this entire ordinance be tabled, and I would so make that as the motion, for it to be rewritten and proposed next month. Well, that's my motion.
We were, our intent was on the three to one time tonight.
But I think it needs to be rewritten from the points I made tonight, and I would make a re. I'm making, I'm making a motion for it to be tabled to, presented as a rewritten ordinance.
I see.
Hi. No. Keplinger?
No.
Brooks?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Harmon?
No.
McMahon?
Yes.
Okay, well, four to three.
Four to three. Thank you. Okay.
And Alvin Keplinger, you said you wanted this read one time, the animal?
Yes.
Okay.
And ordinance provided for animal care and control within the city of Sherwood, repealing outdated ordinances combined into one ordinance on law pertaining to the care and keeping of animals within the limits of the city of Sherwood, establishing updated penalties for violation thereof and for other purposes. That is the second reading of the ordinance.
I just ask you, just kind of, have you had much feedback from the public or, um, council members?
What I have heard from Robin was that there had been some discussion about some changes, and I'd offer that to the council to, if everyone wanted me to be the kind of clearinghouse on that, just go ahead and send those to me, and we, we talk about it, but I haven't gotten any.
An ordinance renaming Thomas Lane in the city of Sherwood, Arkansas to Moonstone Cove and for other purposes. We have it one, sorry? We have it one reading? Yes.
Okay, um, this, this is what you said, but that was one reading that wasn't? This is September 9th, yes, okay. Is that gonna create a bond for the developer as far as assigning addresses or anything?
No, it'll probably make them easier.
If we hold it up?
Oh, I was just saying, no, it's okay.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. I know there's no residence, as again on that particular. Mayor, Mayor, I hope we just had to wait for the number nine, as far as the wait room. Oh, okay, excuse me, I'm sorry.
There's no residence listed on this reading either.
Would you just mind coming forward, so we won't be talking back and forth, you, the au, the audience? Just introduce yourself, please. I'm sorry, I thought this was one that we were just gonna read one time.
I'm Andrew Cronlins. I'm with Cypress Properties, and we're the developer of Stonehill, so, uh, yeah, we're just, are trying to rename this since there's another Thomas Drive, and it's Thomas Lane, and make things a little simpler.
Since there's no residence at this time, well, that section, it's a, a small time to do what you're gonna propose it.
I want to protect it.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Hi. Aye. Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMahon?
Aye.
Uh, members of the council, the next item, ten, is a resolution regarding exterior railing materials, and I wanted to ask, I write this, the, so that we have something on the agenda, but just, I, I don't know if it would be more appropriate to let the developer or the person who's requesting this to make their presentation first, and then ask a member of the council to read the resolution or, does that make sense? That would be better? Okay. Then Alderman, Sanders, you wanna ask?
Yes. Yeah, come on, Kenny. This is Mr. McFessel. He's, he's a preacher there at, um, at his church.
Can I hear you, you bet?
Yep. You guys know this is that, it's, it's. 107 Jackson Road, take left, and it's right down there on the left.
Well, my name is Kenny McFessel. I'm a pastor, uh, in Ridge Assembly. The church's been there since 63, I guess, and what we're going to do, the, the building on the far right is the sanctuary. It already exists. Then the building on the far left is the office and Sunday School facility. It already exists. The building in the middle is what we're looking at tonight. Uh, right now, it's just an L-shaped building. It was built in the early 70s. We're gonna be tearing that down, and we want to rebuild the new building right in the middle. So, uh, the exteriors on the two existing buildings, the architect, that is what it looks like right now. It's the metal siding and the brick coming halfway up. The building on the far left is all siding. So, we're wanting to tie the building in the middle to look like the sanctuary and the, the other building. So, this is the art drawing, the preliminary drawing. We've got more of the building, and yet, we wanted to get through this process first. So, uh, I'm here to request, uh, the city council, if we could, the out, the outer structure, the exterior structure material be the same as the other two buildings. I, I do want to point, if I could, it's not an excuse, so, um, but I don't want to do this for cost savings. Before, uh, Sherwood annexed the Grab Ridge area, you can go look, we curb and gutter the whole entire parking lot, because I want it to look good, you know, so, we're not doing it to save, we just want it to look the same, and for it to all to look the same. If I have to do current approved exterior building, then I have to do the whole facility, which, then at that point, would get, uh, a little more expensive than what we want to spend. But I do have, I don't know if you need to see the siding that we're going to use.
Go ahead and, and, if you don't mind, we'll have a little bit of show and tell there. Is this location in the area that is covered by that ordinance?
Yeah, yes. Well, even if you're asking if it's on a main road into the city.
Answer's no.
The answer, no. That's not, and it probably, we'd never.
I mean, I know what this town, I know what this church is.
Yes.
What is the zoning? How does this probably not zone?
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sometimes churches are additional residential.
Uh, yeah, there, there, there's a post office to the left of the property, and there's the swamp and everything to the right, and woods behind the building. And it's all flood zoned off to the parking lot side.
Wasn't that one of the roads that we were talking about? It's in the brimming well, because of.
Because of the flooding, yes.
In the traffic of the schools and so forth? I would just like, I would just, just for, um, informational purposes, I'd just like to ask our city engineer or our building inspector, what is the current zoning out there?
It is commercial.
It is commercial?
Yes.
That's the reason it was having to come.
Okay.
If it was residential, or some churches are allowed in residential.
Where it came in, it was commercial. Okay, thank you. What's the legislature's answer?
Move for the adoption of the ordinance. Second.
A resolution approving certain exterior railing materials for construction of the Ridge Assembly Church in Sherwood, Arkansas. Move for the adoption.
Second.
Hi. Um, hi. Just so that just. Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMahon?
Aye.
Would you like your tickets back for the church?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Keplinger.
By the way, thank you for having your employees, uh, learn before service.
Oh, yeah.
We appreciate that.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
A resolution reappointing aldermen and citizens to various boards, committees, and commissions.
I have a question. Are any of these committees allowed, like Senior Citizen Committee, does that allow it to potentially expand if we find a very qualified person who could?
I don't, I'm not saying it can, but I don't know. It depends on how many members we have, and they only meet quarterly. We have three. Actually, that's, how many, Robert, how many is on that committee? Is it already up seven feet? Five or seven?
Right now, we're currently at five.
Okay. It's, that's comment about what most of our committees are, I mean.
Yeah, I've spoken to Robert, there's a, an APN in, I forgot who it is, Sherwood, who specializes, she's a instructor at UAMSS who specializes in older adults. That's interesting, getting involved with that community.
I would say they might have some program or something that they love or do, or something.
And they, we, we talked about that, so that might be a better utilization for.
I'll just ask that she gives a priori that way.
Move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second. Hi. Hi. Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMahon?
Aye.
And ordinance provided for the adoption of a general fund budget for the city of Sherwood, Arkansas for the 12-month period beginning January 1, 2017, and ending December 31, 2017, appropriating money for each and every item of expenditure during provided for, declaring emergency and for other purposes.
Budget committee has met twice on this. Is there any discussions or comments, or any clarity that's needed or entertain that?
Look like you had a re. Yeah, move for the adoption of the ordinance. Second.
Hi. Aye. Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMahon?
Aye.
There is a mercy clause.
Hi. Aye. Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMahon?
Aye.
An ordinance providing for the adoption of a street fund budget for the city of Sherwood, Arkansas for the 12-month period beginning January 1, 2017, ending December 31, 2017, appropriating money for each and every item of expenditure during provided for, declaring emergency and for other purposes.
Move for the adoption?
Second.
Lilly? Hi. Aye. Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMahon?
Aye.
Mercy clause. Hi. Aye. Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMahon?
And ordinance provided for the adoption of a wastewater department budget for the city of Sherwood, Arkansas for the 12-month period beginning January 1, 2017, and ending December 31, 2017, appropriating money for each and every item of expenditure during provided for, declaring emergency and for other purposes. Move for the adoption.
Second.
Hi. Aye. Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMahon?
Aye.
Mercy clause.
Hi. Aye. Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMahon?
Aye.
And ordinance provided for the adoption of a 1% sales tax super budget for the city of Sherwood, Arkansas for the 12-month period beginning January 1, 2017, and ending December 31, 2017, appropriating money for each and every item of expenditure during provided for, declaring emergency and for other purposes.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance. Second.
Hi. Aye. Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMahon?
Aye.
Hi. Aye. Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMahon?
An ordinance provided for the adoption of a court automation fund budget for the city of Sherwood, Arkansas for the 12-month period beginning January 1, 2017, and ending December 31, 2017, appropriating money for each and every item of expenditure during provided for, declaring emergency and for other purposes.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance. Second.
Hi. Aye. Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMahon?
Aye.
There's a mercy clause.
Hi. Aye. Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
And ordinance provided for the adoption of a department donation fund budget for the city of Sherwood, Arkansas for the 12-month period beginning January 1, 2017, and ending December 31, 2017, appropriating money for each and every item of expenditure during provided for, declaring emergency and for other purposes.
Move for the adoption?
Second.
Hi. Aye. Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMahon?
Aye.
Mercy clause. Hi. Aye.[1644.46]